Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. We will stand. We will stand to have the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Angie, roll call.
Chick.
Here.
Bronn.
Here.
Duckett. Marilyn is absent with notice. Janet.
Jackie.
Otto.
Here.
Westover is here. And Thomas.
Here.
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay. Okay, consent agenda, the minutes and bills. Do we need to have discussion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes and bills.
Tracy motion. We can have discussion. We're timed for discussion if you want to discuss. That's all right.
Almost got them by you this time.
Yeah, almost. I mean, like, we just, like... What page? On the page?
Uh, the page eighteen. Top of the page. I would imagine that is the law car. Is that that? Or is that a tractor or a...
That's a snowplow for the new truck.
Oh, that's a snowplow.
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is a... I thought we already had the...
We approved it way back.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I would like to mention that it cost eight hundred people to work in a township, four dollars, four hundred and ten thousand dollars to run a township last month. Thank you.
Okay. We need to have a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. To adopt the balance of the agenda, we have one that we have to put on, and I will put it as number four, appraisal. And then, number two is from our closed session. It would be number five. I'm just going to put on there negotiations.
What was number one?
Appraisal. I'm just putting appraisal so you understand what it is.
What was number one?
Is the negotiations for Nowoski.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Okay, Tracy motioned. Janet supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. We do have call to the public.
Hello?
Chuck? Is that better? Yeah. Okay.
Hello, my name is Ton. Ton Bellinger. And I want to start by just, as a new member to the Board of Trustees, I would like to humbly thank the voters of Northfield Township for electing me to be a representative for them. I just want to thank them, thank the voters. Another issue I just want to just keep updated on as a separate thing, Senator Patrick Colbeck has been working in the Senate to try to add a couple amendments to the utilities bill that's been working through the Senate right now. And the amendments that he proposed were going to allow for the consumers to be, consumers to have a choice of utilities instead of just one, you know, instead of one electric or one gas, have a choice that way. In the second section he added, he proposed as an amendment to this, Senate bill would also provide for meter choice. People can choose electric meters of their choice, or gas meter, analog, or the new smart meters. But this did get defeated, and so these amendments were not added. But the bill did pass the Senate, and now it's over to the House. So if we want to maybe get a representative engaged and perhaps let them know that we would like to have, you know, some options as consumers, it might be a good idea. And I think we have a new representative. Is that Donna Lesinski, I think, possibly, for District 52? So maybe we can get in touch with her. That's about it. I want to thank the voters once again, and I want to thank the Board also for their time and their service to the community. And some members will be missed. And have a wonderful evening. Thanks.
Mary Devlin, 9211 Brookside Drive. First of all, congratulations to the new board. But once again, many thanks to this current board and Howard for their hard work in moving this township forward. I hope that the new board will continue the progress that has begun for the best interest for our entire township. Also, I see that Bill Lannahan is leaving. I would like to ask the new board to consider giving the new ordinance officer more time to do the job instead of only two days a week. And on that same subject, I have a question as, why can't the ordinance officer check out the township and write up what he sees and then take action from that? And last, something I've been talking about for years and complaining is the ISO at eight mile. I can't believe that nothing has been done about it. It would be an excellent area for development and another asset for this township. And on a sadder note, condolences should go out to Deb Mazurkiewicz's family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Hi, Marlene.
Hi. Good evening. Marlene Chalkley, 2665 Five Mile Road. I just want to thank those who have served us for the past four years. I know it's a tough job being there, and I have to feel for you, you know, with some of the meetings that we've had recently. But thank you. It's our, America, our county, our township wouldn't be functioning well if we didn't have people that were committed to the community and serving in this way. So thank you all for serving, even though many of you are leaving the board. And I look forward to, and congratulations to those who have won the election. I look forward to working with you all. And thank you to the voters also. It's very humbling to be elected supervisor. I did want to mention Deb Mazurkiewicz also. She's been a very passionate advocate for this community for, you know, 2008 to 2012 as supervisor, and she's being laid to rest tomorrow, so keep her in your prayers and thoughts tomorrow. I also think it's fitting as we're losing important people in our community, not, we're all not important, but important people in our community, is somehow it's fitting to find a way to recognize and remember them. So I'll be thinking about that over the next several weeks to see if there's some way we can do that as we continue to lose important members of our community. Hate to lose the legacies, you know, that we pass on to those that are left. Thank you all.
Someone must have been there for eight years.
Yes, Mr. Duckett. Thank you. Do I have anyone else? Okay. We'll go on to Board Member comments.
Hi.
Okay, Angie. We'll let Angie go first since she made a comment.
Actually, on behalf of Marilyn, unfortunately, she reached out to me earlier. She is very ill today and could not make it, and she apologizes that she wasn't able to be here for the last meeting. And she wanted me to please, on behalf of her, let everyone, just basically say thank you, and it was a pleasure for her to serve. She appreciates everyone in the community, and she's hoping for a prosperous next four years for everyone. The same for myself. Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure.
Mr. Duckett.
Hi. Yes. I'd like to wish you a wonderful happy Thanksgiving coming up. Congratulations to all the people that work hard, and thank everyone, all my fans out there, all the family. Thank you very much.
Okay. Janet.
I wanted to save my comments to the end, but since Angie's not staying, I just wanted to thank her very much for her service. She's been a really good clerk, good for the township, and it was a pleasure serving on this board with you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Kathy? Tracy? Okay. I also would like, since we're saying it now, I would also like to thank Kathy, Angie, Marilyn, Tracy. It really has been a privilege working with you. This has been an excellent board, and I do have to say, we have worked very hard to not on, we didn't always have consensus, which is good, which is a good thing, but we had, we were respectful to each other, and we were able to work through a lot of things. And I really appreciated the time that I had with each one of you and learned a lot from each one of you. Next thing is correspondence and announcements. Howard, did you have anything that you wanted?
Just one quick announcement. The Wally folks met here, I believe, last week. It was not our meeting. It was actually Wally's meeting. The township wasn't really involved in the meeting per se, other than that it was here. It did go out pretty late in our newsletter, so my apologies for that. There was only a few hours' notice. It was posted in the Current and advertised in the Current, and I believe that the AATA advertised the meeting as best that they could, but certainly my apologies for going out late in our own online newsletter. What I will say about Wally is while the project is still ongoing from a planning perspective, I think that from the perspective of what is the realistic sense that Wally is going to happen, I think it's pretty low at this point. One of the things that I actually advocated for in the sort of meeting before the meeting is that, given how unlikely it is for Wally to occur and ultimately be built, given the cost of infrastructure and the level of ridership that they expect, to try to take the last portion of the study funds, which was about $200,000, and spend that on something that could be potentially more feasible, economically feasible, potentially more viable. That was not going to happen. The feds basically said the plan and the study is for Wally, and that is what is ultimately going to occur. That study is going to be completed. But I did want to let everyone know that while I personally think that mass transit would be good for the region and certainly very beneficial to Whitmore Lake and Northfield Township in general, realistically, I do not see Wally coming to fruition anytime soon. So, that being said, you know, government has a strange way of things happening. So, the study goes on, the financials of it continue, the feasibility of it continues, and we'll see what happens. If you have any questions, let me know.
Excuse me. Somebody shut off my mic. Wally has been spending over a million dollars a year for the last seven or 10 years on railroad cars that they've never used. Wally was a bad idea. First thing they should have done is put a bus out there from Brighton or Hall to Ann Arbor and see how many people ride on the damn thing. No. They buy a million, buy all them cars and spend a million dollars a year just to have them sitting there for all these years. Very bad idea. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to Department Head reports. Mr. Wagner wasn't here to be with us tonight, so his report is enclosed.
I have some questions on it. What does the A...
If I may. Go on ahead.
What is AED refreshers? Does anybody know?
Hold on, let me get the report out. What was the question, Mr. Duckett?
It's under fire department training for October, number two. Number two.
Defibrillator.
It is a defibrillator?
Yeah.
Well, I wish, I wish we would know that. These acronyms are pretty difficult.
That's a medical...
Well, the CPR...
Thank you, Janet.
The CPR, I can...
I didn't know.
I can, I can figure that out. Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Yeah, well, I think we should have had somebody from the fire department here. Oh, is Wagner on vacation? It seems like we could have had his second command here. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to Tim.
The police department?
Oh, the police department?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I kind of combined them all, so...
I'm sorry.
Since Mr., it would be Tim.
Okay.
For the wastewater treatment.
Okay. I gotta find it.
And if we had anything on the police, let me know because I'll backtrack to it. I just figured since Mr...
Yeah, sorry. I have something on the police.
Yeah.
I have, I have nothing on Tim, but I have some questions on the police department.
Okay. Then I'll backtrack to that. Sorry, Tim.
I would like to ask, where is Sergeant Smith? If the police came here, says, it has in here on the page, I don't see a page number, but it's the second page. And it says possession of marijuana. And it says very down close to the end of the paragraph. The driver also had a large amount of cash on his person. Officers confiscated the driver's cellphone and cash under force-writers law and seized the marijuana. Charges are pending at the time of this, and they gave him a citation for traffic control. So I'd like to know, how much was the large amount of cash? I think that's kind of interesting. Does anybody know? How much marijuana was it? Does anybody know? Lieutenant Tim Green, Police Operations, is on administrative leave. Green has worked for Northfield Township for over 25 years. The Public Safety Director, Bill Wagner, told me he had to put Lieutenant Green on administrative leave. I'm wondering if he was sick or what, or is he on vacation? Does anybody know that?
I think at this point, since that is an employee situation, we cannot probably divulge what the reason is for the administrative leave.
Is he on paid leave? Do you get paid leave?
Yes. He's on paid, he's on paid administrative leave.
Okay. Thank you. I thought, I think we should have had, when I talked to Wagner on Friday, when he told me he had to put Green on administrative leave, he told me that if I needed anything to contact Sergeant Smith. So I guess he would be the next in line that could have been here at the meeting. Thank you.
Tim? You're on.
I have nothing else to say.
Okay. We have nothing to vote on. Kathy? Did you have some?
My reports too. If anyone has any questions, revenues and expenditures are here.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. And then we have Tammy's. If anybody has any questions on Tammy's, I'm sure that has, I have to say one thing, Howard, since we made it a community center, it has been a busy place. It is a very busy place.
What is?
The community center.
Thank you.
And I do get raving reviews for Tammy. Okay. ZBA report. We did have a meeting last month. There was a situation where an individual went ahead and did an added, add-on to his property without permits and/or asked for a variance. He had to come back, get the area surveyed, and then come back and receive the variance. So that was provided to him last, last month. So, we do not have a ZBA meeting for this month, and the next one would be the third Monday in December. Planning Commission report, Janet.
Sorry. The Planning Commission met November 2nd. It was basically a discussion meeting on proposed amendments to different commercial districts and the residential office district, and discussion of rezoning the enterprise service parcels, so that was it.
Okay. Parks and Rec reports. Tracy.
Parks and Recreation Board will meet this Thursday. Since my term doesn't officially expire until the 20th, I will still be the Board Representative at that meeting. After that, the Board of Trustees is going to want to elect somebody to be the Board Representative on the Parks and Recreation Board. I will tell you that I've committed myself to continuing to work with the Parks and Recreation Board as a member of the public, and because there are some projects that I feel strongly about that I want to bring home and complete. So, I will still be involved with the Parks and Recreation Board as a public consulting member, I suppose would be a way to put it. And I want to thank the Board of Trustees for voting to accept the appointments that was presented, that were presented last meeting, which unfortunately I had to miss. So that Parks and Recreation Board as constituted is in place. Terms are good. Everybody knows where they're at, and I'm going to still be kind of, not even kind of, I'm going to still be very actively involved in that. So, that's the report.
Thank you, Tracy. I'm glad to hear you're still on the, you're still participating. We have the financial report. Township Manager report, Howard.
Just two comments, and then I'll take questions if anybody has any. One, as I've said in the past, if there comes a time where there is an opening on the Parks and Rec Board, I would lend my strongest support for Tracy to come back officially. Other than that, the, I just want to talk briefly about the transition. A number of asked how that operates. A little bit is in my Manager's Report, but I wanted to touch on that just briefly. I've been meaning to send out an email to all of the new Board members, but it's getting to the point where I've probably spoken with every one of them on the issue. So, essentially what happens is that, once the elections are certified, which will, may take place either this Thursday or Friday, but it's potentially possible that it won't take place until after the weekend, the new members of the Board will receive the oath of office. They need to receive that oath of office after the election has been certified, but not prior. Once they receive that oath of office, their term begins November 20th at noon, which is Sunday at noon. If, for some reason, the election is not certified by Sunday at noon, then as soon as the election is certified and they take the oath of office, then they are in fact serving, beginning serving their term. So that is the information on the transition. We'll speak with, I'll be talking with the new board about how they want to handle any board trainings or retreats relative to sort of the new board getting up to speed and thinking about goals and objectives, roles, responsibilities, and those type of issues. Lastly, and we don't have to talk about it at the meeting tonight, but one Board member has approached me for some kind of an official swearing-in. I have not received any requests from any Board members with respect to sort of a public ceremony of swearing-in. It's not required by statute, nor is there any legal obligation to it, but I'm happy to organize it if everybody would like that. Otherwise, we'll just go ahead and do that in the office if no one is interested in doing that. With that, I'll, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Mr. Duckett.
I asked you if we could not invite them here tonight, all of them, and so they could kind of get broken a little bit, and you said you didn't think that that was the thing to do, Howard. So I did ask, if you remember, maybe you don't.
Yeah, I remember, but this is the last board meeting for this board. If we need to do something with the new board, we certainly can do that, but tonight's not the place for that.
Well, I thought it was. We've done that in the past, but you just blew me off. Okay.
I'm happy to organize whatever people would like to do.
Well, you didn't, you weren't for me, so, okay. Board transition. This is what Howard's got on his report. First, let me say congratulations to the new board members. Also, I will be having detailed conversation with each of the new board members on their role and et cetera, et cetera, and responsibilities, excuse me, et cetera, et cetera. If it needs, if it is needed, we might organize a board orientation. I would like to say who would determine if we were going to have a board determination of that. I would imagine, I'd like to think it would probably be Howard.
Usually, the MTA provides board orientation at the very beginning for new board members. So, I mean, those announcements have already gotten, have gone out, and if, if the new board members haven't received that, oh, okay. So those are coming up, and those are also paid by the township.
In my opinion, these are very arrogant statements that Howard made. Sounds like he might want to intimidate some of our new board members. Thank you. One more thing, Howard. On the Parks and Recs, the last sentence, second from the last sentence. Hopefully, this cuts down on the need to continue buying the... But I'm happy to organize it if everybody would like that. Otherwise, we'll just go ahead and do that in the office if no one is interested in doing that. With that, I'll, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Mr. Dockett.
I asked you if we could not invite them here tonight, all of them, and so they could kind of get broken a little bit. And you said you didn't think that that was the thing to do, Howard. So I did ask. If you remember, maybe you don't.
Yeah, I remember, but this is the last board meeting for this board. If we need to do something with the new board, we certainly can do that. But tonight's not the place for that.
Well, I thought it was. We've done that in the past, but you just blew me off. Okay.
I'm happy to organize whatever people would like to do.
Well, you didn't, you weren't for me, so okay. Board transition. This is what Howard's got on his report. First, let me say congratulations to the new board members. Also, I will be having detailed conversation with each of the new board members on their role and et cetera, et cetera. And responsibilities, excuse me, et cetera, et cetera. If it needs, if it is needed, we might organize a board orientation. I would like to say who would determine if we were going to have a board determination of that. I would imagine, I'd like to think it was probably be Howard.
Usually the MTA provides board orientation at the very beginning for new board members. So I mean, those announcements have already gotten, have gone out. And if, if the new board members haven't received that. Oh, okay. So those are coming up and those are also paid by the township.
In my opinion, these are very arrogant statements that Howard made. Sounds like he might want to intimidate some of our new board members. Thank you. One more thing Howard. On the Parks and Recs, the last sentence, second from the last sentence. Hopefully this cuts down on the need to continue buying the properties from the township. What does that mean? I don't understand that sentence.
Sure, but Mr. Dockett, we, I mean, this was your issue. This was primarily your issue, but go ahead, Mr. Thomas.
So something that we discussed at this board level summertime, probably this past summer, was the idea that we were going to send out a letter to the property owners of the, those parcels that we keep kind of getting dropped on us at tax sale, asking them to donate the properties to the township. And I think that what's in the manager's report is just, if we get some response from that and we get some donated properties, that they won't get dropped on us at tax sale the way that they have been in the past.
I did not understand it. One other thing, the manager's report, December 2016. Are you getting in a hurry Howard? Have we got the right report? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Hello. Let's move on.
Hello.
Oh Janet.
I just wanted to speak to the first item under board transition. I guess it depends on your interpretation and perception of what you're reading. My perception was that we are made aware of our roles when we start on the board through the MTA, or you can look it up. We have specific statutory duties. I think the way I read it was if you wanted to have a conversation with Howard, Fink about anything of interest to you and the board or, you know, any knowledge that we can impart to you or he can impart to you before you start on the board is helpful.
I would also recommend that too.
I think that's all that is, yeah. The more you know before you start, the better off you are, so.
And I was also recommend that, and if you don't have the dates for the MTA seminars, I'm almost certain that Howard has those. Okay, first up is the presentation from John Pfeffer. Hi John.
Hi. Well, first of all, we would like to thank you. Our firm is having us as your independent auditors. And one item I was going to leave till the end, but I'm going to bring up to the top. And again, because of the outgoing board members and the board as a whole, let's put it that way, that from a financial situation, you've left the new board in good financial shape. You've been able to maintain your fund balance, stay within your expenditures, stay within your budget and maintain that fund balance, which is very important. So that was something at the very end I was going to say, but again, you know, it's been a pleasure working with everyone and I wanted to let you know that. Also wanted to reach out to the treasurer for all her help. In an audit situation, the treasurer's office is very important and having the records in good shape, you know, for us, you know, as far as verifying tax collections, everything, is probably one of the main areas we look at. So again, we wanted to say thank you to Kathy for all her help.
You can't hear, you can't hear. It's a mic on.
Yeah, I don't know.
Can you hear me?
I can't hear.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. All right, so with that, you know, to start the audit, we come out and, you know, and take a look at all the records and everything else. And with, one more thing I wanted to mention is we have appreciated all the help we've gotten from Howard since, you know, he's been here. It definitely has helped organize the office and to help us with the audit so that we can get it done timely. There was a time before that that we would always have some extra audit fees and charges because everything wasn't in shape. So we do want to say thanks for all his help. So after all that, the good news is we're issuing an unqualified opinion, which is the highest level of opinion that the independent auditor can issue. It means your financial statements are presented fairly. Now, this is very important to the state of Michigan. When they get this report, they're going to look at that opinion right away because they determine whether they're going to continue your state share revenues, which is about 50% of the township's revenues. The other thing that's important is, is anytime you go up for bonding, the bonding ratings that you get are very, it's very important that you have this unqualified opinion. So the township is, you know, has been and will be always involved, possibly going out for bonding, and it's good to have this unqualified opinion. So that's very important. I did want to also mention that besides the unqualified opinion, and again, you were able to stay within the budget, there's always a question of what's a good fund balance for the township. Your fund balance is a little bit more than one times expenditures. And again, as an auditor, or different auditors will all have different opinions. I would just say again that you were able to stay within your expenditures, maintain that fund balance and go forward, which is very important from a financial position, you know, for the township. Also included in the audit is a management letter. There was very few comments and we have already discussed them with Howard and, you know, just to make sure that they're all ready to make any of those corrections and changes which they have. So at this point in time, there's nothing of any urgency that you have to worry about as far as the management letter. Those have, most of those have been taken care of. So I just wanted to let you know that. And with that, I'll just open it up for any questions. Go ahead Wayne.
Eighty-five percent, we, the board has voted on eighty-five percent of fund balance. Isn't that correct?
I'm sorry.
The board has voted that we have eighty-five percent fund balance. Do we have eighty-five percent? Isn't that true?
Yes, you do have more than eighty-five percent.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, you're good.
I got two more, three more questions. Under other matters, there is a fund, fire truck fund currently on the township books that has not been active for several years. The township should consider closing this out. Have you talked with Howard about that?
Yes, it's already been.
Number two, in the current tax fund, there are checks that have been outstanding for several years. These should be reissued. Have you talked to Howard about that?
Yes.
Number four, one, two, three. It is observed that seized vehicles by law enforcement are kept by the township and possibly sold later. A procedure should be in place that should, that shows the status of these vehicles at all times. Have we done that?
Yes, we discussed that with the public safety manager.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks John.
Thank you. So at some point tonight, if you could just approve the audit report so we can timely submit the state of Michigan.
Okay.
John, that's the very next thing on the agenda. We're going to do it right now. Thanks John.
John, real quick, before we go. I do have to say that the first time that I came, this is for the new board members. First time I came on board, I went and met with John and he was a wealth of information and helped with this whole audit process. I remember when we came, when I came here four years ago, we had a lot larger laundry list and.
That's correct.
And Kathy, you have done a wonderful job in getting things cleaned up.
And I would be glad to meet with any of the new board members at any time to help them too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Kathy has given us some wonderful reports.
Okay, our first agenda item is the audit report. We need to have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the audit report.
Do I have second? Tracy motion, Janet second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Code enforcement officer resignation.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may.
You may.
There's no action necessary at this time. Mr. Lenahan is a contracted employee, so there's nothing that needs to be done. You do have his resignation letter in there. Marshall Seven is his company. What I will say is, if you would like, if you would wish, we can have a conversation about code enforcement priorities. We will have that conversation with the next board and that will be a detailed conversation with the board. As I have indicated for many years, it is the board's purview and responsibility to identify the priorities and the structure of code enforcement in the township and then obviously staff implements it. And I'm very particular about making those boundaries and setting those boundaries, because if those boundaries are not set, we really do have sort of inappropriate actions going on. So that being said, what I'd like to do, this board is certainly welcome to discuss, you know, if the program was successful and the ways in which it wasn't successful. But that conversation will be an ongoing conversation with the next board. That conversation will also include how long the code enforcement officer is in and those kind of issues. I will go ahead and advertise for the position. And my intent is to advertise for the position at one day a week. I don't really think this board needs to take action on that. You're certainly welcome if you'd like to do so. But again, that would be also a conversation with the next board as well, is if they want to stick to one day a week or if they want to increase that. Other than that, I will say that I think that with respect to code enforcement, we were, we were beginning to come into our own with it. And I was really disappointed that Bill was leaving us because we were really starting to sort of get an understanding of what the priorities were in Whitmore Lake and get enforcement. In fact, in the last few weeks, we actually had some major enforcement and some progress that was made. So, but I also acknowledge that there is improvements that really need to happen. And I also acknowledge that there's more conversation on code enforcement that needs to occur. So that's all I got. It's really up for you guys if you'd like to talk about it. Otherwise, it'll be an ongoing conversation.
Mr. Dockett.
Well, we don't have to accept his resignation, but we could say that, we could thank him for what he's been doing.
Oh, absolutely. Mr. Lenahan is going to be missed. He was a very nice, personable man. Everybody in the office liked him. He wrote in his resignation letter that you and your entire staff, you meaning me and the entire staff in the audience, office have been most gracious and I will miss our relationship. So.
Maybe, maybe some of his customers weren't all that happy.
So, so anyway.
I will say that this was, this was the first time that we did this position. The one reason, the major reason why we did it was to get the blight out of our township. We felt that it was a, it was one way to, to start attracting people into our township by cleaning up our township. And I think Bill had done a tremendous job at being our first go and try of this. So Janet.
I also want to express appreciation for Mr. Lenahan's work. I personally have seen where things have changed on long-term items that were not being handled at all. So he has done some fine work for the township. I also believe that this should be something that we discuss at the next board or with the next board. Thank you.
So do I. Okay, with that, we have the Resolution 16553, the non-motorized pathway easements. I need a motion to accept the Resolution 16553.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 16-553 and to authorize the Northfield Township to, to assign fair market value for the two easements for Kathy Creman at $10,000 and Patricia Johnson at $10,000.
Tracy motion, Janet supported. I need a roll call vote. Mr. Dockett.
These are two property owners that we are getting the okay to cross their property and we're paying them $10,000 apiece. And we're not going to be using these easements at this time. And I will not be supporting those. Thank you.
Okay, I do, we do have to have a roll call vote. Janet?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mr. Dockett?
No.
Jackie, yes? Tracy?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The checks will be cut as soon as possible.
All right. The next motion that we have is to direct Howard to get appraisals for the property that is in, I'm trying to say this.
The links at Whitmore Lake.
Oh, I can't say it.
MTT case.
Okay. The links of Whitmore Lake to determine true value. I need a motion. Nope. I need the mo. Okay, I'll make the motion. Janet's supported. All those in favor, any discussion? Okay.
May I just say, can you amend the motion to say retroactively?
Retroactively, okay. Mend it to say retroactively.
The reason that it's retroactively is because we started the lawsuit against these people before we voted for it. Thank you.
Not true.
There's no lawsuit. We started the.
It's a lawsuit.
The appraisal. Okay. So Mr. Dockett's asking for a roll call vote. Janet? Kathy? Mr. Dockett?
No.
Jackie, yes? Tracy?
Yes.
Okay. And then the last one is. The board, and I'll make a motion to, to give Mr. Fink and Mr. Burns the authority to negotiate with Mr. Nowatzky pursuant to our discussion in closed session. Jackie motion, Kathy's supported. Roll call on that one? Okay. For Howard and Mr. Burns to do negotiations with Mr. Nowatzky.
Hold his feet to the fire.
Well, that doesn't need to be in the, the motion, but. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. All right, that's all we had on our agenda for tonight. We do have a call to the public, the second call. If anybody wanted to step up, please do so now. Please state your name and address.
My name is, is that on?
It's fine. It's on. It's on.
My name's Andy Licatus and I live at 9249 Lakewood Drive. And my question is, I went to the meeting for the highway and they showed us the alternate routes when they close the ramps at Joy, at Eight Mile. And it goes right through town. It gets off at Barker Road, goes down to Main Street, then Main Street over the bridge and down Whitmore Lake on the west side. That's all the traffic, meaning. That's all the traffic, meaning there's only one lane, and I was involved with one lane today. One was an accident in the morning, and one was a road repair this afternoon, and I saw no police. I want, I would really like to know what the township or the police department here plan on doing about enforcing the speed limits and the traffic. And did anybody go out of the committee, out of the, here, did they go to that meeting last week?
Anybody go where, sir? I couldn't hear you.
To the, to the meeting for the...
The presentation of the road.
For the presentation.
I mean, they started it now, they're plowing up over at Barker right now.
It is online. I was not able to, because I had other meetings, but I did know that there, we have attended other previous meetings. This is probably what, their fourth or fifth?
I've been at the other ones as well. This one here had to do with the traffic pattern.
Mm-hmm.
And it is not a good traffic pattern, but there is no result, I mean, there is no other type of traffic pattern to go.
Right.
They're gonna make one way on, on North Territorial to Whitmore Lake, back up to Six Mile, and Six Mile back onto either Main Street or back onto the freeway. There's, and it's, it could be one, you know, I mean, and it's, and this is ongoing through the winter. So I don't know what, like I say, the police is, are, you know, are doing. This morning, I went to work at four-thirty, and it says it's sixty miles an hour. Granted, there's no construction going on right now at six, at six, at four-thirty in the morning. I had, and I was going sixty-three miles an hour, I set my cruise control. I had a truck come up on me and blink my lights in the right lane, because I wasn't going fast enough. So we're gonna have a problem here, and unfortunately, it's gonna fall on our Northfield Township Police, well, more, more than the state police, because you're right here. And I think you're really, the township really needs to take a look at and discuss with the police enforcement to find out what we can do, especially when they put everything through town. Okay? Also, the other thing was, the easement that you just voted on, was that anything to do with the sidewalks? Okay, so...
It's the non-motorized pathway.
Okay, so that's, that's the pathway on Barker there?
Mm-hmm.
And that's gonna be on the south side? And when will that commence? Since I'm over there in Wildwood Lakes, and we would all like to have that sidewalk in.
I think it's going out to bid now, right?
Yeah.
It's already out to bid.
Would you like me to address that, Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Would you like me to address the, the traffic issues as well?
Yeah.
Okay. So...
I'm all set, can I?
No, you're fine, I just, protocol is, the chair recognizes for me to address it. No, you can stay, stay up there if you wish. So for your first issue with respect to the traffic, we didn't have representation at that meeting, but we have had private conversations with MDOT. We've had private meetings with MDOT related to the traffic patterns and, and how they are organizing the traffic patterns. The chief of police has, has had those meetings with the MDOT folks. So we essentially received the information that you received last week. We've, we received that prior. What I can say is that they're in direct communication, and what I would say is that this really is an issue that you should probably directly address with Mr. Wagner when he comes back. I agree with you that there's gonna be a tremendous amount of adverse impacts on Whitmore Lake. There is a lot of traffic that is gonna be diverted, diverted in our community with respect to this construction. I'm not exactly sure if there's any solution to it. I don't think that there's any alternative routes, but what I would do is address your concerns directly with Mr. Wagner.
There is no alternate routes. That is the route.
Right.
I guess what I'm really asking for is police presence.
Sure. And again, because I don't really speak to police issues, if, if you want to address that issue in the next week, and you feel like that's a really important issue to address in the next week, come to my office, and I will go personally walk over with you, and we'll talk to the lieutenant in charge, and then if you'd like to wait a week, we can, I can introduce you to the chief and, and address those issues directly to the chief.
Okay, that's great, because we've talked before.
Yep.
We, we have no chief of police. We have an operational officer. So when he says chief, he's talking about the fire chief.
Public safety director, yes. The fire chief.
Yeah, he's the public safety director. He's on vacation, and our, our operations guy is on leave, so there's no police right now. There's somebody by the name of Sergeant, Sergeant Smith, but I don't know where he is.
Well, the only thing that I'm thinking, when you talk about the fire department, we really don't want the fire department sitting in an accident, sitting in the middle of town.
Right.
Especially over at Polley's.
And to answer your second question, the two easements that are, have been authorized tonight are related to the non-motorized path.
Yes.
Bids have been gone, have gone out. It is out to bid as we speak, and bids will be received later on, at the end of the year, closer to the end of the year, and obviously, construction hopefully will commence next year.
We have, one of the other things I forgot to ask, I'd mentioned too, and I'm on the board over at, at Wildwood Lake Homeowners Association.
Sure.
And are you going to be doing anything with the sidewalk that we have that we keep clear, which is not the width that you have for the bridges?
So the sidewalk that you have currently right now is gonna be taken out and replaced with a ten-foot sidewalk?
It will be taken out, okay, so we don't have to make our, our repairs?
I would not make any repairs to the sidewalk along Barker Road. That will be replaced, taken out, and replaced with a ten-foot sidewalk that will be maintained by the township.
Okay. Oh, be maintained by the township?
That is my understanding, yes.
Because we, we, we watered all that lawn, whoa, that's another thing, then, if you're gonna do that...
Not the lawn, no. Lawn's a different story.
Now, wait a minute, okay, now we, if I can keep this going, one of the things that we do have over there, though, is we have an automatic sprinkler system that keeps it green. As soon as you move that sidewalk, there goes our sprinklers.
If we could, if we could go over this after the meeting, we can put you in touch with the engineers, and we can go over these details.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for bringing it up, too.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It, it occurs to me that, and I certainly encourage a gentleman meeting with whomever at staff or chief or police level that he wants to, it occurs to me that the next board should be interested in having those conversations as well, because that's more than one person's concern, I would imagine.
And I was thinking of asking Howard if we could add that on to the agenda specifically to have a discussion on it?
On the MDOT?
Yep.
Yep.
And, and how the police department, even fire department, are going to address the traffic and emergency.
Yep.
So any action plan that they have.
Very good.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Gudehof, six-four-three-one, Whitmore Lake Road. By the way, thank you very much for this change on the last meeting to allow questions. It was very, very successful, and please continue with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Board member comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, just before board member comments, because, can I, can I say something?
You sure can.
So, for those who are not gonna be with us, I've, I've had five or six boards in my time in my professional career. I would like to say that this has been one of the most effective boards that I've ever been a part of. I want to congratulate you all, those of you who are still staying with us, and those of you who are specifically those who are leaving. While there was some conflict in this community, the fact of the matter is, this board has worked their tails off, and has really gotten a lot accomplished for the betterment of Northfield Township. You should be proud, and your legacy will be had going on decades and decades in this community. There's no question in my mind about that. It was an honor to serve with you. It was an honor to work for you, and I appreciate it for those times that I wasn't at my best. My apologies. And I truly am looking forward to the next four years, and, and a really productive four years of that. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve with you, but more importantly, thank you for your service, because it really mattered in the last four years. You guys did a really good job. So thank you for that. And then, before any board member comments are made, I do want to say, you know, my condolences to Ms. Mazurkowitz and her family. She was influential in the non-motorized path in this community. There's no question that the non-motorized path would not exist today if it was not for her, and more than anything, there was no question that she did care deeply about this community. So my condolences to, to her family, and for those of who were friends with her, and that is all. Thank you for the time.
Well, thank you, Janet.
I can't add a whole much more to that, but I did want to personally thank Kathy for all the work that she did. It has made a huge difference in how the township is run in the treasure department over the past four years, and, and she spent a lot of time in the office, made a lot of effort, and it was very important to her to get it all right, so, and it was a benefit to us and to the members of the township as well. Congratulations to Mr. Dockett for being re-elected, and Jackie, of course, you deserve your position. Well, Ms. Angie and Marilyn, of course, they did great jobs as well. And Tracy, I wish I could keep you in my pocket every time I come to this meeting. You are so grounded and rational, and the voice of reason, and I appreciate all the knowledge that you bring to us. You've done an amazing job, too, and stay with the Parks and Recreation, because it will flourish with you. Okay, all right, thank God, all right. Thank you, Howard, as well, for the last four years. We would not be where we are if it wasn't for all of your effort. You work harder than most people I've met, so thank you.
Kathy? Okay. Tracy?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I...
Mr. Dockett?
Did you say me?
I, I'll say you right now.
Ah.
I would not probably be able to leave without saying something.
Ask you to buy and use local services and businesses in Northfield Township if you can. Thank you very much.
So I also want to thank the voters for voting for me, and actually voting for the people on this board. It really, I feel that we do have a wonderful, wonderful community, and I think everybody that was voted to this board feel the same way, and those that are leaving share equal value to their efforts on this board as well. And I, I do like, I really do appreciate Tracy. Sitting next to him on the board for four years, I have learned a lot. And the one thing I've learned is not to talk so much, is to always listen. So he has really been helpful. I also wanted to thank OHM for providing the credit on the two invoices for Horseshoe Lake. I appreciate them giving their services for Barbono for Horseshoe Lake to build the bridge. I just wanted to have that acknowledgement out there. They have done a lot of things for our community, and, and it's worth saying, giving our appreciation to them when they do something like this for someone in our community. And then, last but not least, Happy Thanksgiving. The passing of Deb was very, was very much a shock, and I'm gonna miss her.
She was, of course, in the...
Yeah.
I wouldn't be here either, so, thank you.
I forgot one thing. I will accept whatever seat I get. I'm not gonna be here.
[laughing]
Can, can, can that be an official part of the minutes, please, Ms. Limble?
As long as I can...
No, I'm serious.
As long as I can hear.
You're gonna put him out the exit door out there?
So I, I need a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, say aye. Okay.
Thank you all.
I won't. Be wrong. All right, I'll do that.